Thirteenth meeting of the Tiverton Town Council. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Counselor Perry?
Present.
Counselor Edwards?
Present.
Counselor Janik?
Present.
Counselor Edwards?
Present.
Counselor Demateris?
Present.
Counselor Burke?
Present.
Counselor Milburn?
Present.
What's happening? Is it you?
Present.
That one did not work on Tuesday night either.
Which one?
This one.
Dennis, just leave it alone. All right, sorry. Consent agenda, approval of town council minutes, January 19th, 2023, special meeting, Counsel Perry abstained, absent, January 23rd, 2023, regular meeting, Counsel Perry abstained, January 23rd, 2023, executive session, Counsel Perry abstained, absent. Acknowledged receipts and minutes from boards, commissions and committees, Historic Cemetery Commission Three, Historic Preservation Advisory Board One, acknowledged receipts of reports, Town Administrator Department Monthly Reports, January 2023, Town Administrator Police and Fire Department Overtime Reports, January 202023, acknowledged receipts of correspondence from the town of Foster, Resolution 2023-01, urging the rejection of changes to the Rhode Island Enabling Act as proposed by the Rhode Island House of Representatives Land Use Commission dated November 10th, 2022. Sarah Trobog, Concerns About Zoning Board Review Meeting on January 4th, 2023, Regarding Colbert Enterprises Application for Seasons Gas Market. Gail Lawrence, Regarding Colbert Gas Station Application Suggesting Moratorium on Expansion of Gas Stations. Nancy Cormier, Regarding Souza Road, VD Incorporated New Charging Stations in Development. Mark and Sharon Moore, Regarding Public Hearing on Short-Term Rentals and Civic Plus Statement of Work for Municipal Code, Online Hosting Administration Fees and Supplements, Approval of Tax Assessors Abatement for a total of $4,429.96. Would any of the council like to withdraw anything from the consent agenda? Counselor Janik?
Can I do 4D4 and 4D6?
I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda excluding 4D4 and 6.
So moved.
Let's remain second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Counselor Janik, D4.
Okay, so 4D4 is a letter from Nancy Cormier discussing, she lives across the street from VD, and they have a charging station for the electric vehicles, and it was put in, she was not aware it was being put in, and they're charging late at night, early in the morning, I mean, she said over 50 lights on the property, and it's excessive, and it's open 24/7. So is that something that we have to get?
What I understand is the town administrator is looking into this, right?
So unfortunately, while the building official was out, the zoning officer approved this permit, and I've seen this driven by it probably 100 times, my initial thought was it was ancillary to VD, it was for their own use. We subsequently found out that it is not as open for the public, so we're working with the owners of VD to rectify the installation of that particular charging unit so that it is not conflicting with the neighbors, because we agree totally, but it's my understanding that it was only supposed to be utilized during the operating hours of VD. So we're working with them to see if there's any way that we can rectify it.
Are you thinking that you're asking them to move it somewhere else?
We're actually going to see if they can make the accessible, screen it off from the public, and you would come into that parking lot and utilize it, but I still would like to find out from them, does it need to be open 24/7?
Yeah.
My understanding was, I thought it was ancillary for their business only, but we will get to the bottom of it, because I believe Rhode Island Energy has a part of this as well.
Will that address the lighting issue also?
So we will take a look at that as well. It should not be affecting the neighbors all their life.
Because I'm sure that there'll be more of these, you know, in the future, so.
Now, this wasn't anything that we were supposed to permit?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want me to go on to the next one?
Yes, please.
I just was wondering if someone could explain to me what this was, I read through it a number of times, and I just don't, it's the Civic Plus, it's an agreement.
I looked at it too, and...
Yeah, this is for muni code?
Okay.
For our Code of Ordinances. It was, muni code was company, it got bought out by Civic Plus, and they're basically changing their pricing structure.
Okay. Any other questions on these items? I'd entertain a motion to approve 4D4 and 6.
So moved.
Second.
Let's remain second, all those in favor? Public comment, there's one, Michael Meyer on SDRs. Is Michael here?
I just wasn't sure how that was coming up tonight, I wanted to have the opportunity to ask a question.
Well, it's coming up as a council discussion, because I did close the public hearing. We had two consecutive public hearings, so it's a council discussion on all the, I don't know if you saw it, but it's all the ideas that we had, and Counselor Burke put it all together so we could discuss each and every one of them.
No, I didn't see that. That was...
Well, it's part of the...
It's part of the package.
It's part of the package, it's online.
Oh, I was looking, we were all looking for it.
It's usually online. Yeah. So there'll be no vote taken tonight, it's just a council discussion to see what ideas we still want to go with, and then at some point, Counselor Burke and our attorney will get together and put it in a more formal proposal.
And at that point, will it then be posted again on the website, and then there's a continuance of the public hearing?
I shut down the public hearing, I didn't continue it. So the public hearing, if you remember, I closed the public hearing and I opened it up to counselors, and that's when the council decided to do what we're doing tonight. I mean, okay...
I thought you had continued it to February 13th.
I continued the subject, but I closed the public hearing, and we looked into it a couple of times, because there was a little bit of confusion even in my mind, but I did close the public hearing. But that doesn't mean at some point I'll entertain some questions, but this evening it's just to discuss the points that we brought up, listening to all of you, okay?
Could someone tell us where it is online, because I looked, I spent several minutes on my...
So if you go to the town website, and you go to, I'm going to backtrack, on the front page, you go to Clerk Base?
Go to...
Clerk Base. It's right as you, actually, it's not on the homepage, it's on the, under online documents, on left-hand side, you click on online documents, then you'll see Clerk Base, you click on that, and then on the left, you're going to see Town Council Agendas and Minutes, click the plus sign, and that gives you a drop-down, click the plus sign for Town Council Agendas, and then click on, you can click the plus sign again for tonight's meeting, and then you go to General Business, and it's Item 9G, and you'll see a link, the word amendments underlined, for a link to the document.
It's not, I will admit, it's not the easiest process. Like, I'm not going to say die, no brainer, I mean, it's...
The other way, this whole thing is, what's also posted at the Secretary of State, right? You can access, no, you can't access those on the Secretary of State, okay.
Right, because that's where we...
Everyone in the audience is going to want to...
Yeah, all of our agendas and minutes are on that part of the website.
If you need any help, you can always call the Clerk's office, and we can help you during the week.
Thank you.
Madam President, just a suggestion, I don't know if it's possible right now, but given that there's only a handful of people here who are interested, would it be possible to make a couple more copies that we could give to them, rather than send them on the rabbit hole through the internet?
Yeah, it's up to the council. These are just preliminary ideas.
I understand that, but I mean, they're all...
I just want everyone to understand that this is nothing written in stone.
It's for discussion.
It's for discussion only by the council. Did you find it?
No.
Yeah, go ahead.
Oh, okay, I was going to go...
Thank you.
Go ahead, while you're, I'm going to show you.
And Counselor Burke's going to come over and show you how easy it is.
Problem solved.
No, I actually, every once in a while, have to think about it. All right, public hearings. Maybe I'll wait for Mike. Do you see Stu? The podium is totally blocking off that ball tag. I can only see the shirt. I can say that to him. It'll be fine. I insult people daily. All right, public hearing, approval of the proposed amendments to the Tiverton Code of Ordinance, Chapter 66, Solid Waste Management, Article 3, Collection and Disposable Recycling and Landfill Regulations Regarding allowable location for donation and containers, this was continued from 1/23/2023. We had a meeting, a public hearing the other day, a lot of citizens did not feel we should do this, we did have a change, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They felt, they felt we should not do the ordnance, or we should...
We should not have these?
Bins.
Have these bins, you were here, weren't you?
No, I was.
Okay.
That's why I wasn't sure what it was.
All right, and we told, there was a couple of changes, but I think that the general feeling of the council was not to do this at all, but I'm going to open the public hearing again, and is anybody out there that wants to talk about this? I know the DPW director does, but I'll let, you can come up. Up to the podium, ma'am. No, 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 sit down then, it's much more comfortable if you sit here.
Right at the table.
Supposed to shout from the back.
Yeah. I just need your name and your address.
Martha McNort, 189 Highland Road.
You can bring that closer to you. Okay, go ahead.
Highland Road, Ria. Is, I might make sure I'm talking to the right thing, is this about the bins at the town farm?
This is about, we're no longer going to have them there, and we're talking about putting them in businesses, where the business is responsible, and the vendor's responsible for the cleanup and the maintenance of it.
Okay. I will tell you what, where there's a problem if there are no bins anywhere, and maybe especially at the town farm. I co-manage the thrift shop at Amicable Church, and we have donation bins, that's how we get our lovely things that we sell, and the bins are about the size of this table, the top lifts up, the kind of thing you'd have on a deck. So when the landfill closed, we received many bags of trash. And if there was no place to recycle things...
But there is, we have a recycle center open.
People with clothes and all this kind of thing, I'm just saying that we find that we now get those things, we get bags and bags of things that we can't sell, so what do we do with them? We bag them up in Tiverton trash bags and put them out with the trash, which of course adds to the tonnage that has to be transported and dumped, which is an expense, and this is done by a bunch of ladies in their 70s and 80s. I don't think that, I don't think that people are going to go very far to get rid of their recyclables, they're going to go to the closest, easiest place, and that will be us. So I, I think that if there are not donation bins for recycling that are handy and very visible, that you haven't eliminated a problem, you've just transferred it to somebody else, us.
Quick question, you first said that people were dropping off trash, but then it sounded like these are clothing, what are they dropping?
Everything, okay. Generally, what we get, that we resell Thursdays and Saturdays, 10 to 2, are very lovely things. About 20% are not.
Lovely, clothing, other materials?
What we call hard goods, small appliances, china, dinnerware, anything you'd find in a thrift shop. But people are in a hurry, they're not very cognizant of where else they can take things, and there's those big bins, lift up the top and throw it in.
What's in there? What are they putting in there?
Is it food, food or...
Trash, trash?
Okay, 80% of it is very nice things that we can sell. The 20% that should have gone to the recycle bins...
What kind of recycle bins?
The ones at the town farm.
So clothes?
Clothes, books, there's several things that go there, there's some hard goods that go there, they're not all clothes. Are not, I don't know what they do with them, I believe they sell them by the pound.
So I guess my confusion is before, when there were the bins there, you always, 100% of what was dropped in your boxes was usable by you?
Yeah, at least 90%, yes. So, and if, you know, we get...
Well, we can't have them there anymore. It's closed.
They need to be someplace very visible and advertised and not up a lane, you're going to find stuff in the woods, too. I just know you are.
But also, these bins in town, people leaving trash all over them, they're not being maintained, and that's part of our problem, that's part of our problem, that these bins, and many people came and spoke to us about it, that is real eyesore, and now that the dump's not open, there's going to be more of that, so that's why there was quite a bit of citizens that came to us and urged us not to do this at all.
I understand that it's an eyesore, what it is for us is a sore back.
But that's not anything that we can prevent.
So...
Because even if we only have one or two in a different area, people may still do that.
They will still do it, so, you know.
Because they won't be down there.
Where would they be?
Whatever business that would like to, I guess, host this is the way I would say.
I would imagine that the way...
And...
Unfortunately, but...
And therefore, we still have the problem?
Yes.
But we have no place down there any longer to keep bins?
So let me just be clear, so...
And we're not going to put it on public property, because that is causing a lot of problems with our maintenance, picking up all the trash around there, it's not, when you said trash, I thought you meant what we're seeing, we're actually seeing trash. So, like Mike said, and I didn't really want to say it out loud, but it will, it'll probably be in businesses down at the North End, so what I'm trying to tell you is, I don't know if that will help you at all.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just so we're clear, we're talking about the ordinance changes in front of us, correct?
Yes.
All right, so I'm confused as to why we're saying that businesses are going to host these, because what we have in front of us for discussion is that all donation bins are going to be expressly prohibited within the confines of the town, which, from what I'm hearing, and maybe the lawyer can weigh in on this, would potentially impact what Amicable has for their thrift store.
Okay, so...
All donate collection containers slash receptacles for the purposes of depositing donated discarded items shall be prohibited within the confines of the town, that's pretty explicit to me.
Well, John, I was thinking of that as she was talking, we were talking about those Planet Earth ones, those other ones, not private ones at the church, but we could explicitly, because I know there's another church that does this, too, up the road, we could put, not excluding churches or, with its thrift markets, with its actual thrift markets, because there's another one, is that it, Christopher's? No, it's Holy Trinity. Holy Trinity, yeah, they also have that.
Yeah, for the eyeglasses, like what came up last...
No, 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 they have a thrift store, so I'm sure they have donation bins also.
I guess, my point being is that part of our conversation, when we talked about some of the issues that we had with the ordinance, narrowing it down with the express purpose of eliminating the donation bins, we were unaware of the initial discussion of examples like this, but the ordinance that's in front of us today does not reflect that, so I don't...
I was just going to mention that to her, this ordinance, unless we specify, would stop you from doing that also, so, yes, you're right.
I guess my point being is that perhaps we would be better served just continuing the public hearing, because very clearly this ordinance is not what was discussed at the last meeting.
This ordinance was definitely what was discussed.
No, no, I mean, the changes that we posited to the solicitor, this does not reflect some of those questions that we brought up at the last meeting.
I disagree.
The direction, and I'd have to go back and look, but I'm pretty sure the direction we gave to the solicitor was simply to strike the language in the second paragraph, so that it could not be, these could not be anywhere in town, I'm sorry, the language in the first paragraph, other than the town landfill, to strike that, and to strike with the exception of town landfill in the other one, and then to strike the last sentence as well. It was focused on not having them anywhere in town.
Right, not on private, not...
Not anywhere.
Not on private businesses, even.
Correct, but then there was the entire side conversation about, for instance, the eyeglass donation collection piece, and that that would be impacted.
And this prohibits it.
I understand that, but the direction we gave to the solicitor was to bring back something that contemplated, for instance, the eyeglass donation bin, and didn't expressly eliminate that, because it would be problematic. My point being is that this is not ready for public discussion, because what we asked for is not here.
John, I continued it, and you all voted to continue it here, because I did that, these people came to speak, I have to have them speak, this doesn't mean that we won't change it after we hear from the public again, that's how the public hearing goes, but I cannot not have people speak who came to speak about this, and I'm looking at the minutes right now, it's in here somewhere.
On page four.
So just to make sure that I understand, so that the objection to having the donations bins from Planet Aid, et cetera, whoever has them there, whether, and right now, they're on public property at the town farm, that it's more work now for the Public Works Department to keep that area tidied up, so it's not an eyesore. Is that what that... That area is not even there anymore, which one are you talking about? At the landfill?
That's the only ones that are.
Right, but I don't know, have they removed those yet? No, but those will be removed, because that, that's not going to be there anymore.
Right.
Right.
And the reason that this came up as a whole question was because there were aesthetic objections to it?
No, it was, what do you want us to do now? Because we have to take it away from there, where do you want us to put it? And during the discussion, and from hearing to the public, there was a lot of concerns about them, and we decided not to have them at all, and if you read the minutes, it does reflect that we told them to change it that way, and which, there was many reasons why they don't want them there, okay? It's a big issue, it's a big issue, and it's a big issue for the businesses, too, so there's a lot of reasons why, and John, Counselor Edwards is right, if we go through with this one, then you won't be allowed to have your donation bin also, so we may want to tweak that a little bit.
So I just make sure I understand, it was really an aesthetic question and a work question for the DPW, that the ones at the town farm, over the course of time, have been problematic?
Yes, it has.
Well, it's that, and now that the landfill is closed, we no longer have staff at the landfill, we had staff there every day, there's nobody there anymore.
So the staff would pick it up?
It becomes problematic for the town.
Okay, I get it.
So we do have a recycling center, if we were going to do it, which was part of the discussion, would they be relocated to that recycling center? That was not the favorable position at the time that this came up during the last hearing.
And I'm done, but I just want you to understand that you haven't eliminated the problem, you've just transferred it.
Thank you. So, anyone else like to speak? Rick?
I'm happy to go after everybody else.
I don't think anyone else...
I think you're going after everybody else.
Jesus Christ.
Thank you, good evening, I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this issue, I have spoken on it a couple of times at the two different meetings, and I think my position is fairly well-known, I was not able to make it to the last meeting, because we were working late at DPW with the sanding operation, but I would like to, again, give my plug, that I think the donation bins are very important to have at different places in town, and I think the...
But not in town property?
Correct, correct, and the town doesn't have to have them on their properties, as Chris said, the town farm recreation area is not manned by anybody next to the landfill entrance, and we would not recommend it at the recycle center, because either A, it's going to be outside the confines of the recycle center, which are unmonitored, or B, they would be inside the recycle center, and the recycle center is only open 24 hours in the entire week, three days a week for eight hours, that's not a lot of time. So donation bins, in my opinion, are a great thing to have, and I'll express why. Now, bear in mind, in my opinion, we've covered in the ordinance and the form, the issues that were addressed two weeks ago, whenever the meeting was, it specifies what you have to do, it specifies that the permittee and the operator have to fill out the form, have to assign responsibilities to that for cleanup and for removal, if they're not doing what they're supposed to do, and it goes through a step-by-step process, that step one is, if DPW receives a complaint or sees it, and this form and stuff was from a long time ago, I mean, like, two or three months ago.
This isn't what we're talking about now.
Yeah, but that form is part of the...
The original?
The original, but this is eliminating all of it.
Yeah, we don't, DPW does not want to eliminate all of them, and small...
You weren't here and heard the comments, though, the other day?
No, but I heard about the comments, and they're not going to be at unmonitored sites like Fish Road, Bogomash Intersection, or the Westport County Street, or Main Street, whatever it is there, they're going to be, they have to be by ordinance, either on a contiguous lot of a business or a church, et cetera, and what I mean by that is technically your business, or your social club, or your church, could have its building on one end, immediately adjacent to it would be your part... could have its building on one end immediately adjacent to it would be your parking lot, as long as it's a monitored area. And again, the steps are in there that if they don't do what they're supposed to do, then they're removed. That's not a lot of burden on DPW. The director would review them, and he or his designee would talk to the entity or the permittee, the operator, and after, you know, is specified, then they have to leave. If you, which is expected to have about 5,000 tons of trash in town. 1% of that is added because people are not recycling, not diverting. That's going to cost you about $5,000 if you're over cap. If you do not meet your recycle goal, I'm not saying we would or would not, but if you don't meet that, it's going to cost the town about $10,000 to $15,000 in lost revenue in rebates from Rhode Island Recycle Corporation if they offer those rebates, and they're projecting to do so next fiscal year. DPW can remove a couple of bins and clean up a little bit of trash for that kind of dough. And it's actually easier to clean up a little bit of trash left at a bin that you say you have to get your bin out of here because you're not monitoring it. It's easier to do that than pick it up around various places in town. So there's serious costs and real costs to that. And the, we appreciate residents' concerns, but we think we've addressed them. And again, aesthetics and litter are important issues, but they're only a part of the issue. Recycling and trash are broad, broad topics. The harder you make recycling, the less people are going to do it. The harder you make it to divert things that are not recyclable but can be taken somewhere other than Rhode Island Resource Corporation, the harder, the less people will do it. That's just a known, in my opinion, known factor. How do you make it for somebody, the less they're going to do it. And people mention about Big Brothers, Big Sisters, they'll come to your door. Yeah, they will, but they're not going to come for one or two t-shirts, one pair of pants. If you go buy a well-controlled donation bin on your routine, whether it's a social club or a church or a business or a restaurant, people will say, hey, you know, I'm going by there next week, I'm going to put my stuff in a bag, one or two t-shirts, and put it in there. And those entities have, by current ordinance and by proposed ordinance, required to report to DPW their tonnage, and that can be substantial. And small businesses, churches, clubs, they're not talking about stopping shop for the humongous parking lot. Small businesses have a vested interest in keeping their lot and their area clean. It's not, we're not talking about these huge parking lots. And people have told DPW, we say, I've been preaching the same thing for a while, have you thought about donating it? Keep it out of the trash stream. And people have told DPW, I'm not going to drive to Savers. It's out of their way. And they pay, they were paying it, the trash at the landfill to get rid of it. The, you will, no matter what you do with trash and recycling, no matter what is involved, you will have some abuses. We're just trying to limit those abuses and be cost-conscious. And no entity is required to accept a bin. Any business, any social club, any church can say no. They don't have an agreement with any particular operator, so that's fine. And again, the bins are not removed yet at town farm entrance. And of course, there has been trash there right behind the big four-by-four sign that says no leaving of refuse. So, and somebody addressed the, well, the bin may not be a worthwhile cause. We're all, every day, responsible for ourselves to figure out whether or not an entity is worth donating to them to see if they're worthwhile. And that, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer it.
So Rick, the bin is still there?
The bins, yeah, there are multiple bins.
So I don't know why you're getting more trash then? Because if they're still there, why do you, you know what I'm saying?
When the landfill closed, we got, you're calling it trash, I'm calling it unsalable items.
Right, but the bins are still there.
People, the public have different opinions about what is saleable and what is not.
All right, but that's not anything that we're going to prevent from happening if the bins are still there. I don't think your increase is due to that not being there at town farm anymore.
What I'm saying is it's going to, when those bins are gone, then we're going to see--
An increase, but you haven't yet. Okay.
And I have been, and this is not a, you know, a quickie type of thing. I've been thinking about this, looking into this for a couple of years. And the bins, again, could help people like the different churches because there's book bins, there's clothing bins, there's eyeglass bins, so people can take it to the bin of their choosing. And I wouldn't say that it has to be, for instance, a church with a thrift store on site, because churches, for instance, partner with people, and their thrift store can be off-site. So, again, happy to answer any questions, but obviously I have an opinion on this, as you can tell.
I can tell.
Well, wait a minute, Mike, let's hand it first.
So, Rick, thank you, and certainly I, and I think we all appreciate your passion and your homework on this. I guess my question is, from your knowledge and experience before, and I know you, I don't think you were the director at the time, so you might not be able to answer this, but before we had the bins down there, where were they generally located in town?
The infamous one, I don't know where they all were, but I think they probably were at churches or social clubs, or maybe even businesses. And in fact, some businesses have had them, unknowing of the rule, and the zoning officer in complete correct operation said you have to get rid of those. But the infamous one is unattended corner of Bogomash and Fish Road.
Yep.
So that was just an invitation to deposit items that you did not want.
Yeah, and I would say many of them, as I mentioned before, were in the North End. And I think one of the challenges I have is we see a lot of conversation about how folks, at least on the North End, in terms of main road, feel like they're becoming the dumping ground, no pun intended, for the town. And I'm concerned about that with these. And I recognize everything, because I have your other one up on my computer, that you put in here and all the thought you put into it. I also don't want to interfere, if we can find a way, with the thrift shops that are run by the churches. I mean, if I'm running something right there on site, then, you know, that's an easy way for folks. At the same time, if I'm running something and I know it's inconvenient, you might say, well, you can only drop off at certain hours. And I think actually Savers does that. You can only drop off at certain hours. I'm curious, the, and you probably don't know the answer to this, you said some folks didn't want to go to Savers, they'd go to the landfill instead and pay for it?
We had somebody drop off a lodge item, and I happened to be there. It was a Saturday and I was doing stuff, and I said, have you thought about donating that? Because it was a lodge item and they were going to pay. I said, you know, like Savers? And they said, I'm not driving to Savers. Might have been last Saturday, it might have been the Saturday before, I was at the, talking to recycle center attendant, and I forget what the item was, it might have been a stereo or some such, and he said, did you consider donating? He says, I'm not driving to Savers. And Savers is very close.
I know, that's why--
And the thrift store, again, the churches and social clubs may not have a thrift store on site, but they partner with somebody, or they're a collection place for a broader range. And we, again, I've been telling people for a while, have you thought about Savers? Have you thought about St. Vincent de Paul? Salvation Army has a place, a store in Somerset.
Right. And the piece of your argument that I find more supportive of doing it is your piece around the tonnage and the cost. At the same time, I still am concerned that what we've seen in the past, and even when I've taken stuff down to the bins down there, sometimes they, there's been debris, if you will, outside of the bins, having that speckled around the town.
Right, and that's why, we understand that, and that's why the ordinance and the form are set up to address that issue. Step one, you talk to them. Step two, you have a meeting or whatever the step is, I don't have it right in front of me. And step three or four is, out you go. So I wouldn't hang my hat on what happened 10 years ago. Things have progressed since then, recycling is a bigger deal now, and we have purposely placed options in there for the town to make the permittee and operators responsible, and if they're not, they have to, they have to leave.
Councilor Janet?
I agree with Mike on the tonnage. I think that, in my mind, when we closed the landfill, we were going to see people dumping, but I was really thinking big tires, mattresses, things like that.
Your wishes come true.
And I'm sure, I'm sure. But are we seeing smaller dumping, just bags of trash?
It's hard to pinpoint exactly if there's been an increase or not, but for instance, I don't know what it was, may have been Friday or Saturday, I was working late and somebody came in because they were on call, somebody had dumped a TV on Cananicus and Fish Road and dragged it, so--
Lovely.
Yes, and they had to go out. So you don't want to make things hard. By the way, TVs are free, as long as the glass isn't broken, to recycle normal business hours. So has there been an increase? Hard to tell because there's always been some trash out there. But what I was discussing is, it's easier to clean up in select locations than it is all over town. And if a person says it's, one of the reasons, one of the reasons we close books or shoes, you put in another 1%, and it can cost $5,000 to the town. And if you don't meet your goals, it can cost 10 to 15. Now, I'm not saying all these items work individually will make you reach your goal, but it's an overall picture.
Because I did receive an email or text or something from somebody who lives in one of those areas where they get dumped, and was reporting a lot of little bags of trash. And I'm just wondering, is that something that could be recycled? Is that, I mean, unless you open it, you don't know. But is that something that they just didn't want to put into a Tivitan red bag? Or they didn't--
We've had that in the past, too.
And again, it's a good question, Deb, and I don't know the answer to that because tires, they cost $5, but you can take them to the recycle center before and now. TVs, if the glass isn't broken, is free. Clean mattresses, no bedbugs, dry, clean, they're free at the recycle center.
You checked them, right?
Yes, we checked them. And you don't really see bedbugs. You don't see them, but you see what they leave.
Yeah, you do, but sometimes they're in the mattress also, so you're not going to see--
That's not under our control.
Right, okay. I just wanted to know what you did.
I mean, a lot of what I see dumped is, like along Cananicus, it's chairs and it's TVs and things like that, which these are not going to affect that unless somebody comes and dumps a chair right outside that bin. I mean, I don't want to see more dumping, but I don't know if this is going to fix that either.
The easier you make it to recycle, the more recycling you're going to have.
Rick, after all this discussion--
Yes.
And I was a business owner right now watching these discussions, I wouldn't put that on my property because of what everyone is saying. I think, I think that that's going to be the problem. I don't, I don't think you're going to have to find these people. I think that once this becomes a problem, it's going to be gone. They're going to tell them to, but the word's going to get around, don't put those there because they're more of a problem than it's worth for us. So if I was a business owner watching all of these, there would be no way they were going to put one on my property because of what we're all talking about. There's going to be trash left there, chairs left there. So I think that even though you think this is a solution, I don't think it's a good enough solution, because I think people are just, businesses are just going to get rid of them.
I think we'll find out in short order, but we'll never know--
Until we try.
If we don't try it. And the big thing is, you won't even notice the 50-ton extra trash, but it's going to cost you $5,000. You may not even notice why you don't meet your goals, but it's going to cost you lost revenue.
I realize that, but that is, we've always talked about that problem because we closed the landfill. We always knew this was going to cost extra money.
Just a couple of quick questions. So when you say that overage for Rhode Island Resource Recovery, the $5,000 fee, is that per 50 tons? Is there a formula? How does that come about?
No, I'm just saying if you're over cap, that you're going to pay a buck 10 for every ton. So if you have just 1%, that's going to be $5,500.
A dollar and 10 cents per ton?
No, 110.
$110 per ton?
Per ton. Overcap, that's the rate.
Okay. And then, just to clarify, that $10,000 to $15,000, that's opportunity cost that we're talking about here?
If you meet your goal, and it might be 35% for this particular rate, you get $3 per ton. So if you say you had 5,000 tons, which is what we're projecting, we don't know, that's what we're projecting, but even if you have 4,000 or 6,000, you're talking a possible $2 to $3 per ton that they give you back when they, when they do the recycle rebates. So you would lose that money. Could be 10,000, could be 15,000.
Follow-up question on that. How do rejected loads factor into it?
Rejected loads, if people are recycling improperly in their curbside pickup, then you get the tonnage rate. If it's overcap, it's a buck 10. If it's under, it's 55 and a half, and you pay a $250 fee. So we don't want increased rejected loads because people don't, they're going to start throwing things in there like books or clothes. And I understand we anticipate more costs because the landfill's closing, but we want to avoid the extra costs if we can.
So--
Or at least try.
Just to follow on that question, and I know I'm probably slightly deviating here a little bit, but when we talk about rejected loads for recycling, I think we have a broader conversation that we need to have about how we handle recycling in this town, because I, I mean, I think at the first time you brought this up, you mentioned that, for instance, wet cardboard automatically makes the load rejected, and yet the vast majority of our recycling bins are not--
We're going over what's actually on the agenda.
That's why I told you to stop me if I was.
Helped me to stop you.
Okay.
And it is off-topic, but plastic bags are the biggest source of--
You're going to get in trouble too now, all right? Stop it.
Thank you.
Rick?
Apologies.
Thank you.
Rick, I have an email, I'm trying to find it, and I'll send it to Chris to send to you, from a fellow who lives in town, I think he was at the last meeting, and he works for somewhere in Mass. And they've done some stuff around donation bins that, you know, maybe you've looked at them, I'm not sure. Oh, Oxford, here it is. And he thinks they have a good program. They've partnered with C-Mark, who I don't know that is, who that is, but, so I'll forward it, and, you know, if you want, you can take a look at it.
Thank you.
So any other questions or comments from the council? Any more from the audience? Oh, I didn't even see you over there.
And DPW appreciates your consideration.
And we appreciate you, Rick. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
I am not as tall as Rick.
No.
I'm Gail Lawrence, I live on Long Pasture Way, and I think this is a really tricky situation. But as I listened to all of you, and I was at the previous meeting, I had a few thoughts that I would just like to off-the-cuff share. One is, what's the possibility of a pilot program so that you could actually test this, as Rick seemed to suggest? Secondly, who is going to enforce? I think the litter committee's major objection was that there was no enforcement and that the companies were non-compliant, to the point where it was a burden on the people who had to clean up around those bins, or all around town when they blew around. So those are two thoughts. And then it occurs to me, too, that the, part of the reason the recycling has worked as well as it has was when they went to pay to throw, it hit the people in their wallets.
Yep.
And so they made a more concerted effort to recycle. So I think somehow, there's a lesson to be learned there, because public education can, and public awareness, trying to elevate people's concern about the place they live and how it looks, right? I mean, I'm not assigning that to any of you personally, but I think that in the process, DPW has done a nice job of putting out a flyer, giving you information, and somehow promoting that throughout our town might, in-- promoting that throughout our town, might, in fact, make this pilot, if that's what it turns out to be, a more successful one. It wasn't a success before. It was a disaster. And I was on the litter committee, and so I speak from, you know, lots of tons of garbage I've picked up in town. So I just wanted to add those thoughts, and really, they're spontaneous. I have not come here to make a prepared statement.
Chris, who will enforce this? Because that's always getting an issue of enforcement.
Who will enforce no bins?
No who will enforce bins, if we decided to do the bins.
Public Works.
And they're not busy enough, especially in the summer.
Or...
In the winter, in the snowstorm.
Public Works and whoever gets involved.
Would also be the code enforcement, so it'd be building and zoning as well.
Hi. Thank you, Revere, 258 Bridleway, I'm the litter committee chair. I had no idea we had this tonnage issue, and we get refunds and all that stuff. If you all decide to do this, maybe we can just have the bins at the churches only and put on them. Tiverton Amicable Church, and then it at least justifies that we don't have Planet Aid here, and all the other ones that are international, and the money is not going where it should go, and they're not picking them up, and we tell them to pick it up, and it becomes these dumping grounds for the DPW, who have been phenomenal keeping them clean at the town landfill. But now that the landfill is gone, we can help our own town. However, we need to put limits on it, because I have 137 volunteers on my list that are out there year-round, picking up litter. That's just the litter that people just throw out their car windows, plus all the recyclable stuff that's not recyclable from the fast-food restaurants, and the nip bottles, and I can go on and on and on. We're just trying to make the town as gorgeous as it is on the waterfront, not to look like these dumping grounds. So there should be some way that we can all have both the DPW benefit and the litter committee benefit and the town benefit. So that's my last spiel. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other comments, discussion? Does anyone want to make a motion? Or not a motion? Yes, Mike?
I'm not sure if it's ready for a motion, but I would suggest that we send it back, looking at John's catch with at least the eyeglass thing, and if the council wants to look at churches or places of worship. And what, though, are there parameters for that? So is it only places of worship where they also have thrift stores? Or is it any?
Well, I don't know. Do any other churches that anyone can think of have containers outside them?
Just the two of them.
Yeah, me too. And it's private ones, it's not...
Well, yeah, but...
Holy Ghost? No?
Well, they have... So there's two of them that have yard sales, and they must store stuff there.
Yeah. But they don't have Planet in all of those.
And the ones that the two churches we're talking about, you got to know, they're not obvious.
Yeah, so maybe bins affiliated with the church that are clearly... Church or place of worship that are clearly marked as donations to that place.
Thrift store, yes. And, yeah. And unfortunately, we can't stop people from putting things in these bins at the churches, that the churches don't feel is for resale. That's up to them, what they're going to resell and not resell. So, Mike, that would be a motion you made, to have it go back to the solicitor.
Yeah, let me see if I can... Motion that we send this back to the solicitor to address the allowance of eyeglass donation boxes, because those are usually just a little window-type thing. As well as donation bins that are associated with a place of worship and clearly marked, a place of worship that also has a thrift store. Or, let me see, if we limit it just to a thrift store?
Well, I have to tell you, I know that when St. Teresa's has it, they bring it inside. The church is open, you don't leave them outside. Because these are big objects sometimes, too.
So place of worship and the bins must be clearly marked for that place of worship?
You're striking the with thrift shop?
No, I'm sorry. I'm suggesting we keep it in. That's the motion. Keep the thrift shop in. See if there's a second, and if there's not, then we'll...
I'll second it.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just a quick piece of discussion. Potentially, we would might... We don't want to amend the motion to do this, but I would propose removing where we struck, with the exception of the town landfill, and replace that with the exception of the recycle center. And while I recognize that the recycle center in its current form doesn't have the capacity to have these things inside of the fenced-in area, I've been told numerous times that this is a temporary solution, that the final iteration is going to be larger and will have capacity. So perhaps at some point down the line, the DPW would be able to welcome them there.
See, I don't have a problem with keeping them in containment at the recycle center. And even though Rick says they're open three days a week, but if I was going to bring something down there, I'd grab my bags of clothes, or whatever I needed.
Three days is better than no days.
Three days is better than no days.
I'm fine with that. Are you fine with that?
I'm fine with that. Do you have that, Todd?
That was the second paragraph?
Yeah, second paragraph, it's already been struck out. It says, "With the exception of the town landfill," just put that back in, but replace town landfill with recycle center.
No, second that.
And...
Deb?
What about those little book boxes? I think they have one outside of the VFW. And people can deposit books, and people can take books.
This could get really...
I mean, I just don't want to make it so specific that we start to have issues.
I know, but that...
One at Grinnell's, too.
I don't think the books...
The free libraries?
Okay. But that's different than donation things, a free library, because you bring... Well, I know how I do it, I bring a book and take a book. So that's a little different to me than a donation.
Is the one at VFW? Because I was mentioning, Chris, I was thinking, is that a free library, or is it a bin? I'm sorry? It's a book donation bin. Yeah, see, I... This motion would not allow for that.
Yeah. And I'm not...
It shouldn't be there right now, as it is.
Right.
You know what? I see it when I go by, but I can't tell you exactly what it does.
I don't...
Yeah, no, somebody over there, I'm not sure.
It's a book donation, you drop off books except that form.
Yeah. I don't think... Like, right now, that isn't allowed. That should have already been fined. So should the eyeglass.
Yeah, we've never really touched eyeglasses.
We've never really touched eyeglasses.
Book donations can be sensible. I'd now drop my book donations weekly to the library, and they put it in their book number, and sell them, so that's not an issue.
No, I wouldn't do the book donations, in my opinion, because that is true. You can bring them to the library, I've done that also.
Right. What is it there for, that if people can't take them and leave them?
I don't know.
No, so there's a book donation... There was, I don't know if there still is, Rick. There was a book donation drop down at Town Farm.
Yeah, it was.
Right, so it's just the same as a...
You just drop them in there?
As a clothing one, it's just a smaller door that opens, but I could put 10 books in there at one time if I wanted.
So you're not taking books, and you're just dropping them?
Well, no. Yeah. And it still allows, I mean, so if I'm going to bring my books, well, you know, maybe I want to put my bookcase there, because I don't need it anymore, you know?
People still shove trash in that, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll fit, yeah.
Yeah. All right, so this is the motion, and the second. Any further discussion again? The time we spent on this is like... All those in favor? Opposed? Nobody? Okay. We'll put this on the next agenda. I'm kidding. Approval of proposed amendment... Come on, Stu, I can see you're ready to come up. Approval of proposed amendment to the Tiverton Code of Ordinance, Chapter 2, Administration, Section 2.1, fees and fines for beach parking fees.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So just a quick background on this. In terms of what the fee structure is, the car, motorcycle, trailer fee remains the same from before for residents. RV fee remains the same. The only portion of this that would potentially impact a resident of Tiverton is, the Recreation Commission would request the ability to say, if you bring in a trailer, you have to buy a sticker for that, but that would be $10, the same as a car fee, because it's taking up a car's space. The big change within this really relates to the development of a non-resident pass, which my understanding from some of those that have predated me on our commission, is that we had one before. So we had originally looked at some other ways to potentially implement something similar to this, and then ended up working with some folks from the windsurfing community. I do want to credit them, because their feedback was incredibly helpful to us, and what we came up with was the opportunity for a non-resident pass that would recognize a fee that's lower than some of the other beaches, but still we feel a viable rate. Just as a comparison, Little Compton, because that's the one that always comes up, their resident beach fee for a season is $250. So within this, it would be a car, motorcycle would be 150. There would be, for non-residents, a senior citizen rate, and that's defined as 62 and older, that would be $50. RV season fee would be $300, and then the trailer fee was 100. Yeah.
Okay. I think, somehow, I think we got rid of this around the time where we got the grant and we couldn't charge for... Residents couldn't be free unless everybody else was. It was somewhere around then, that I think we got rid of some of this.
Possibly, and it's...
I think so.
I mean, again, the day rate elements are still viable, as it is for Grinnell's, so with that particular grant.
So non-resident, the day passes you changed?
Nope.
Nope.
Nothing on the day rates have changed.
Okay.
Yeah, the only day rate-related piece would be the trailer fee, which has been added in for both.
Any questions?
Madam President?
John?
Mr. Gelfelin, so, why 62?
Because that's what it is, I mean...
Yeah, I think that that number was actually taken from some other places that we'd identified. I don't remember off the top of my head, unfortunately. I want to say related to something like AARP had it in there. I apologize, I don't remember the exact number.
The only reason I ask is because I just Googled very quickly, senior citizen age, and the first thing that pops up is 65 years or older, so...
Yeah, Dunkin' Donuts and those parts, and most places at 62. That's what they consider, that's probably...
AARP actually wants people at 55 right now.
I could join AARP when I'm... You could join AARP when you're 18, there are people doing it.
That is true.
So it might be a same.
Just saying.
62 retirement age.
I think 62 is a good age.
There was a method to that, man, I will admit. I apologize, I don't recall offhand.
My only suggestion would be to go to 65, because that's when... That's according to Medicare, is what senior citizen definition is. But apart from that, thank you.
Depends on your pension plan, if you have one. I don't want to wait another three years to know we do it.
You're younger than me.
He's not younger than you.
Oh, no, he's not.
All right, does anyone want to change to 62? Is there further discussion on that?
To 65.
To 65? I mean, it's up to you guys.
You just...
Well, if somebody wants to give a motion.
Take a motion.
Wait a minute, you have to open the...
Yeah, we still have the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, Deb, thanks for reminding me. The hearing is open, the public hearing is open, if anyone would like to speak on this subject, don't go anywhere.
At least she's going to try and get out of the way.
You're running away from public comment? No, no, no.
So the non-resident Foggland Beach passes, are they going to be different than the season passes for both beaches?
So this is something that we discussed. It's when we look at, when somebody's coming in from like an enforcement standpoint, as long as there is a pass shown, we will probably end up doing two different colored passes, just to make it easily identifiable. But in terms of the duration of time that the passes could be used for, and then from enforcement, they're going to be ballpark the same. The colors may be different, the design might be a little bit different.
And I bring that up for a reason, and it goes to the grant, that you can't charge for a season pass for Grinnell's more than twice what the normal rate would be. So at Foggland, which I have no issue with your fees, but you have to clearly distinguish that that's a Foggland season pass.
Correct. No, understood, understood.
I know, but I was asking...
From an imagery standpoint, yes, I mean, it's definitely doable for us.
Have a contest one for Foggland.
Well, and we are working with the schools, again, for the design, so one of the questions that came up is, does the runner-up end up getting selected as the non-resident pass?
That's fine.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone else?
Can I voice it from here?
Yes, she has.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are you saying that the fee, which last year was $10, and you got a package of the purple bags, so essentially it was free, it's now going to be $50?
No.
No, no.
Non-resident.
To clarify, for residents, the structure is exactly the same. No, no, no.
I could see some of them go...
The fee that we're referring to relates to non-residents.
Okay.
Residents won't change it all.
Okay.
Okay?
Go get the bags.
And you'll get the bags. Anybody else?
No.
Anyone else? I mean, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Non-resident trailers?
There's... Well, there's no parking, there are no trailers allowed at Grinnell's, so it would have to only be applicable at...
Talking about Foggland Beach.
Yeah, so that would be, you could do it as a day pass if you wanted, or you could do it as the season pass on there. So the season pass, a non-resident season pass, the trailer fee for that would be $100.
What about the day pass?
The day pass would be the equivalent of what the regular day passes, so it's, down there, it's $10.
Yeah, right there.
It doesn't say it, is my point.
So it should be cars, motorcycles, and trailers?
Slash trailers.
Slash trailers.
Oh. You're right.
It's good, but I think it's a wild...
I like to tease them. I have to tell Mike. I mean, anyone else from the audience? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel, anything else? Like, entertain a motion?
Make a motion, we approve as presented with the modification to the non-Tiverton resident day passes, the line that says cars and motorcycles, put another slash there and add trailers. Is that accurate?
Second.
Does that get any further discussion?
Is that...
Are you okay?
Yeah.
All those in favor? Okay. You're coming back later.
62.
Marines?
It was 65 or 62?
62.
62.
Yep.
So the young retirees can go to the beach on a day, too.
Don't take that social security early, get the head.
I only have, well, I have it. Mary is Broward, Tiverton Farmers Market, requesting special event for MFA Art and Garden Show on Saturday, June 17, 10 to 3, 3852 Main Road. You don't have enough parking.
Okay.
Right?
There's.
Do you have enough parking? Like, I'm looking, I'm looking at all these parking, right?
Well, you have to also realize it's, not everybody's there at once.
Yeah, but how much parking do you have?
And not everybody comes, one person per car.
Right, but how many pop?
So, I think she has.
So, is each of these little lines a parking space?
Well, it's my rendition of what it looks like. I don't know specifically. I think she has about 65 parking spots in there between there.
It's not 65. We talked about this before. It's like 20. What was it, guys? Does anyone know? 20?
I don't remember offhand, but.
Please remember.
It's 35 and then nine and 14. If you use the ones for the three buildings. Are we talking about the first meeting, the Roswear, this discussion?
Yeah.
58?
It's 35. It's 35 here, right?
And that's not, and that, by the way, is not, I don't believe is including the additional spots here.
Where are all the vendors going to park?
So.
They, go ahead.
Do you have any agreement with the people on the road across from the mill shops, the lot across the road?
Holland, Jimmy Holland.
Jimmy Holland?
Not yet. We're going to give him a call if it gets approved.
Because I think that that's what you're going to need.
I don't think we're going to end up approving it unless you get that, unless you get us more spots. As we all know, this is a very congested area.
Yeah.
That time of year, it's even more congested. You, I suggest you get a detail for this also, an officer. But I think, if you're, say you're expecting 300 to 400 people, I'm thinking of Potting Gray.
Right. Well, it's not going to be anywhere like that.
Okay. So, if you're expecting that many people, when I first looked at this, I was sure you were going to use that parking lot, Jimmy Holland's parking lot.
Yeah, if we can, we.
Because that's a perfect place to park.
Yes, exactly.
And then, across the street from there, they've had, they've had something there.
Where courtyard is and there's.
Yes, they've had something in there.
Yep.
And then what they usually do is put a police officer to help cross.
Right.
And that's where the detail is.
Right.
That's just my suggestion, but.
So, what I'm promoting is, all my vendors park down there in addition. We extended the hours from like four to five hours, so it would spread it out a little bit more. We learned that from the Potting Gray. Again, not everybody comes at one time, so it would spread everybody out a little bit more.
And you're expecting this, then what you got at Potting Gray?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. This is not, I mean, we're having 20 vendors.
Thank you.
Right.
Well, I saw you, Meredith, and I saw Farmer's Market.
No, not at all. We're going to start with like 20, 25 vendors.
Yeah, and I think you put that somewhere here.
Madam President?
Yes.
20 vendors?
20, 25 vendors.
On the possible list, I count 41.
That was just a, you mean the little. She wanted a list, potential list? I don't, I haven't even sent an application.
I get that's what this is, but.
I haven't even sent an application out. No one's signed up, no one has paid.
It's possible.
I don't even have an agreement yet.
Okay.
Madam President?
There could be a complete flaw for all I know.
What, for 400 people, what would be the required number of parking spaces?
For 400, I think you'd need 100.
Okay.
At least.
At least, because isn't it four per car? Is that how they do it?
I believe that's one of those.
Four per car. So, if you say there's 400, let's just say the most 400 people.
Over 400.
But still, they don't do it that way. In case they stay, you know what I mean?
So, without, without this other ancillary lot, there's 66 spaces.
I don't see 66, Dan.
So, if we're fresh, if we're.
Because it's at the Sea Berry House, right?
Yeah, so you've got, you've got the Sea Berry House had, had the nine required spots. Then you had the building next to it with the, you know, lawyer or whatever, and I'm assuming that's the Four Corners Gallery building, based on this drawing, that had 14.
Did you ask them if you could park there?
It's all owned by her, I got permission from Ross.
They're leasing the business, is that what?
Yeah, but their lease, Four Corners Gallery is leased.
Right.
And that was the issue with her, you can't count them twice.
You can't count them twice.
Okay, yeah, I could get permission from them.
But still, if they have business that day.
I can't count them anyway.
There really isn't enough parking down there, but.
So, what did they used to do for like cultural bazaar and?
Well, yeah, well.
They were, they used those other lots down the road.
They used the other lots down the road, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because you can't use parking places where the businesses are in business that day.
Right.
So, I know, which they can't.
Believe me, I run into them every day.
Right, so, the Navy isn't in this area. I've times have felt it's been dangerous for what's been going on there. And I'm up and about all the time, and I've been there for some of these events, and I've seen near misses. If you could get that other area, I think it would be better, but like Chris said, that's what concerns me. She can't count those if those businesses are open. The law offices you can count.
Okay.
Because we've discussed that, because they're not open on a Saturday day.
So, should I come back with permission from him for that actual lot?
Yes.
Okay.
We're not saying no. I'm just concerned about the parking, and I just want, well, this is just me, I don't know if the rest of everybody agrees with me. And then I also think you definitely, we definitely need to at least get one detail. But if you could talk to the chief of police and see what he thinks.
Okay.
If you need more than one.
Yep.
Because I know at times he's asked for two.
Okay.
I'm not sure he will for this, but.
Well, that, try to nail down a more accurate number of vendors and where they're going to be, because they won't be coming in and out, they're going to be there.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, but she doesn't, she's not going to do that until we give her approval.
Yeah, I haven't done anything.
It's going to be a problem.
Well, we could approve up to a certain number of vendors.
Yeah, we can say 20, we can do that.
Right.
All right, so, can we have a motion to table until the next meeting?
So moved.
Which, with, with Meredith coming back.
The next week or one more?
No, we can do the next two weeks, all right?
Sure.
Yeah, because she does want approval so she can get people. And she'll come back after talking to the chief of police and see if he, how many he feels you need, and then see if you can get additional parking. So, that would be about it.
So, it's a 27.
So, we are going to continue it to the 27th. So, a motion in second. Any further discussion? What, we did a second?
We did a second, okay.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, Meredith.
Thank you.
And we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Thank you. I see annual tree warden appointment to expire January 31st, 2023. Frankie Ramos, Manchester's Tree and Landscaping, 13 Edmund Road. I see Frankie, you can come up. There he is. Hi, Frank.
Hi.
Hi. You've been, you've been at Tree Warden for how long now? Couple of years?
I think this, this will be the third year.
And all I hear is compliments from the town about you and that you do a really good job as far as administrators.
He does an excellent job. He's always very good at what he does, and he's very responsive and.
I got the TPW director saying yes, too. I have heard nothing but good things about you, and I've, I think I was there when you were first appointed.
Yes.
So, thank you for being so responsible and good to the town.
Yeah, something like, you know, keep doing servants of the town, you know, as much as I can.
Good. Any questions from the council?
He just answered mine. He just answered mine.
Oh, yeah. All right. Do I have a motion?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Frankie Ramos, Manchester's Tree and Landscaping, 13 Edmund Lane, to the annual tree warden, to a term that's going to expire January 31st, 2023.
Second.
I have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, Frankie.
Shouldn't it be January 31st, 2024?
2024, yeah, sorry. I amended it. It was printed incorrectly.
Because this term would have already expired.
Yes.
Yeah, you're all done.
Frank, we'll see you next week. Come on back.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you, Frankie.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
With all our votes.
Town Farm Renovation Committee, I had a withdrawal from both candidates that asked us not to consider them, that they have other responsibilities, and that they did not have the time.
Well, that's really, that is too bad.
I know. Administrative contract, discussion, possible vote to, I made you want to write here? Yeah. Discussion, possible vote to award contract to Online Mooring LLC for electronic online mooring registration system.
So, we did put this out to bid. There was only one responsive bidder, the same entity who did a presentation to the Harbor Commission. I would recommend that we award the bid. There'll be no additional cost to the Harbor Commission, all fees get passed on to the end user.
Any questions?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to award the contract to Online Mooring LLC for the electronic online mooring registration system.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just wanted to make sure Tyler Loomis was okay with this also?
He is. I'll be informing him tomorrow, and Clint Clemmons, also of the Harbor Commission, has to be apprised, and we'll reach out to the firm and let them know they've been awarded the bid.
Okay, great.
How long is this for, Chris?
I believe it's for three years.
We need to vote. Motion's made in second. All those in favor? Stu, discussion possible vote to advertise RFP for Pyrotechnics Provider for Firework Show on Saturday, May 20th, 2023. I'm laughing because Stu left me a very clever message today. This date is wrong.
Yep.
The correct date.
It's one week later.
You had to tell them why.
Of course. So, I got Meredith Memorial Day weekend, I have it ingrained in my head that it's May 20th, it's the only way I remember these things, it's the 23rd.
So, because his wedding anniversary is May 20th, and it was Memorial Weekend, he just figured it's always going to be that day.
Yeah, no, so I apologize for listing the incorrect date.
Not late till I 4:00.
Far more important.
The date is what?
It's the 27th.
That was the message I got on my phone today.
And then the 28th. So, Saturday, May 27th, and then the 28th, which corresponds and aligns with the dates of the parade.
And as I was making this agenda, I was wondering why you were doing it the week before, but I was going to ask you.
And it does also say, just to be clear in here, it says, seeks to apply funds for the Memorial Day weekend show. So, I had the concept right, but poor execution on my part. I apologize.
Where are you going to dinner on the 20th?
Anniversary.
It's 2024.
Okay.
We're all going to come.
That was just.
My anniversary too, too.
Mine too, Chris.
Oh, my God.
Paco provides a 16.
Lot of Memorial Day weekend weddings.
Yeah.
All right, guys, so.
Some fireworks.
Any questions?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to grant Mr. Gilflyn the ability to advertise the RFP for Pyrotechnics fireworks provider for the show on the previously discussed dates.
Second.
Do I have any further discussion?
I just have one question. You have talked, you, you either have or you will be talking to the Coast Guard, right?
Correct, and the permit requirements to do this, so it would be off of Grinnell's beach, and the bars would be required, as well as the permits would be built into that?
Now, what I understand is Pyrotechnics helps you with a lot of this, right?
They gave us a ballpark, and they also mentioned those elements would be included.
And just to tell the public, the casino, not the casino, the power plant will be the ones that will be sponsoring this, and they're giving the money for this fireworks as a civic donation. Okay, so I have a motion in second. All those in favor? Thank you. You're all done now?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Stu.
Police Chief Jones, discussion possible vote to form committee to discuss need for new safety complex.
Hello, sir.
Good evening. So, based on the last presentation that we had, I know several members of the council, including the Vice President, were talking about forming just an exploratory discussion committee. Not sure how you want to proceed with that, but I wanted to put it on the agenda so we could have a conversation about getting, obviously myself, the fire chief, members of the council, and possibly members of the community together to form a committee just to do forward momentum so we can discuss the current public safety facilities that we have, knowing that they are woefully overdue for upgrade, if not outright replacement. So, I put it forward back to you, just to discuss how we want to form the committee and move forward with that.
And I think what you just outlined pretty much covered. I see you have a grant proposal in here?
So, that grant proposal was from 2019, unfortunately.
Oh, yes, we did not get it.
That was one of our strikes, so we didn't get that one.
We'll reapply, though.
But we will definitely reapply. There is definitely grant money out there, not only to fund a study, but also hopefully to fund a building, or multiple buildings, depending on what direction we want to go.
And remind me, we did not set aside money for.
We did not.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, for those of us who have toured your facility, I think we, and those who have not on the council, I urge you to, and anybody else who wants to see the facility and see the dire shape it's in, it was built holding cells that are, we have three.
Correct.
And they are behind Plexiglas.
Correct.
Because of safety reasons.
Correct.
But the fire sprinklers are on the other side of that Plexiglas.
So, there's, the Plexiglas is on the bars to prevent someone or an individual from doing harm to themselves. So, we had to get a waiver or variance from the state fire marshal to put a sprinkler system in there to, because of the changes to the code after the station nightclub fire. But unfortunately, the variance and how the sprinklers work is, you have the cells, the plastic coating, and then the sprinklers on the outside. So, essentially, the cell block acts as kind of a makeshift microwave.
Yeah.
In the event of a fire. It's totally non-conducive.
That's so cool.
It's cool there, but, so the purpose behind having the sprinklers is, if an officer or someone were to open the cell block, there'd be a curtain of water to allow people, the officers and the individuals in custody, out of the building.
Yes.
But like with any correctional facilities or any public safety, we still utilize a But like with any correctional facilities or any public safety, we still utilize a lock and a key, which there needs to be security override. So in the event of an emergency or someone is harming themselves or having a medical issue, we're still utilizing keys to get in there, which is just, in today's day and age, not appropriate.
And these are those big skeleton?
No, kidding.
Pretty close.
And plus, you have records that are stored and other things out in trailers.
Correct.
Okay.
And I know that, I know those of you who have toured the building and we've talked about it, we've just, we've oututilized the space. When the building was built, unfortunately, it was not even built for female sworn police officers in mind. And some of you have seen the facilities that we currently are using to accommodate them, which are, they're not acceptable at all. So we are at that level and at that point now that we need to talk about. And I know the administrator was present too, and I digress. We had a architect that walked through the building with us because we want to make some minor upgrades to dispatch, given some grant funding that we currently were awarded. Even he recommended, given the age of the building, the layout of the building, that, okay, utilize your grant funds for the immediate fix of your dispatch area, but do not invest any more money into this building.
Well, there's a legal, and if we expand beyond the dispatch, the whole building winds up coming up under code. So there's no way that we're going to be able to do that.
Right.
So, you know, my thought when talking about this was that we, form a committee as you described, I was hopeful that we had some money to start the study, but certainly that committee can look at, with you and with your prowess at finding us monies, look at finding some money to really do a thorough study of what we want. And at least from my perspective, I think you and I have a similar perspective that this is a public safety complex, not just a police complex. And then, so I, years ago, I was at a meeting at the East Greenwich Police Department. I don't think that's a public safety, but I'm not sure because I was only on one side of it. But they have a nice public meeting room, and it was a nonprofit group that was meeting in that meeting room, and it's, you know, available for use. We don't have, other than town hall and the schools and the library, we don't have many options.
Correct.
So I think, you know, with your leadership and working with Chris and figuring out, I mean, I'm certainly willing, but I don't have to be the council member or members that are part of it. I'm certainly willing to be a part of it. And, you know, finding some other, you know, certainly somebody from the schools, I think that's an important piece. And obviously, the Fire Chief and/or other members of his staff. And in, I know we don't necessarily do this if they're not residents, so we might have to figure this out, but I'm thinking business owners, or at least having conversations.
Absolutely.
With business owners.
I know we had a meeting today with our mental health partners, based on the contract that we just signed. And to your point, sir, I mean, we don't want this, or at least I don't envision it to be just a police department and a fire department with a jail cell and a garage to house the fire trucks. I definitely think there needs to be a community element to this, because what we do and we utilize now, to your point, we have meetings everywhere. The library, if we're at the senior center, if the shelter is at the middle school, the code enforcement's here, municipal corps is at the library. I'd like to have, these are legacy projects, I'd like to see the public safety complex be a true community public safety complex for vaccination clinics, shelters, mental health meeting rooms, officer and community wellness spaces, under one huge umbrella.
So I'm not sure what we need to do, just to.
Well, to my, you touched on my point. Usually when we set up a committee, we decide who's on it. And you don't want too many people on it. I was thinking the police chief, the fire chief, the town administrator, the fire marshal. And maybe.
DBW.
DBW. And maybe three to five citizens.
Don't forget the town administrator.
Well, I said that, didn't I?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I never figured.
I know you don't.
I forgot him before. But.
But I also think it's important to have a member of the council on there as well.
Right.
As a liaison.
Right. A council liaison. Now, the citizen, I would encourage these citizens to be architects, engineers, that kind of thing.
Yes.
Safety officers.
That's why I was thinking five, to try to get the people in this town that can really help with this.
That'd be great.
Because when we did the school committee, do you remember, we specifically had an architect, we had an engineer, we had an educator, we had like all different things. But that's pretty big, as I'm saying right now.
Yes. I mean, and at this point, you know, we're doing exploratory, so it's.
Well, that would be six.
Okay.
No, no, no. Six plus the five.
Ten. That's ten, counting a council member.
One, two, three, four, five, six, eleven.
Madam President, do we need to establish this by resolution?
Yes. That's why I want to know a membership, like we just don't. Does that sound good to you, though?
Yes, ma'am.
So that would be eleven.
Yes, ma'am.
And you always want an odd number.
Thank you.
Police chief, administrator, fire marshal, fire chief.
Fire marshal.
I think it's upon the fire marshals that had to do.
His code enforcement experience will come into handy for sure.
And the Fire Chief was just told he's on this committee by resolution.
Madam President, could we have the solicitor help draft a resolution for the next meeting?
That was gonna, I was gonna ask for a motion to make a public safety committee and to instruct the solicitor to do the resolution with eleven members, as I stated.
Second.
Question.
Yes, Mike.
Are we able, this is not a subcommittee of the council, correct?
Right.
Or is it?
Oh, no, it isn't.
Okay, so we're not limited to residents for voting purposes? Or are we?
I believe it would be.
I think we are.
Residents for voting. Any votes that they have to take? Advisory.
Yes.
Okay, so then I ask that because then you're their ex officio non-voting, Bill's there, ex officio non-voting.
And Danny.
And Danny? Oh, okay. And the fire marshal is ex officio non-voting.
What is the charge of the committee?
Patrick.
So I would say to.
You should say what it is.
Discuss the need.
For a new.
For a new public safety complex.
Could we put new public safety, safety community complex?
I think we say public safety.
Complex.
Facility and the need of impacts to the community, impacts to current public safety, and any other logistics, such as location, size, operational effectiveness, response times. I mean, we can get into like a pecking order, but I think the need of a new state-of-the-art facility to serve the town of Tiverton. And its public safety needs.
We'll get to the bullet points this week.
I'll, yeah, I'll wordsmith it, and I'll get it to you, sir.
Todd, stick to one of my hands, huh, Mike?
No, it's watching.
If you have eleven members and three of them are non-residents, we get an even number.
Well, it has.
Honestly, I'm not as concerned about this because it's advisory.
They're not gonna, they're advisory. They're really not gonna be voting.
Right.
So.
They'll be making a recommendation back to the council.
Right. Yeah, I just look at it, this is kind of like a working group.
So I have a motion in a second. Okay, I just have to think. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Administrator Carter and Treasurer, discussion possible vote on alternate sources of funding for two.
Vehicle, the motor had blown. We allocated $35,000 to replace the motor. As we did that, we also found out, once the motor was installed, that all the ancillary accessory groups for hydraulics, air, brakes, all those things also needed to be repaired because the truck sat for so long. So at the time, we thought that we would take the money out of Public Works' maintenance budget. And as I'm sure Rick will explain, if needed, that his maintenance budget has taken a very severe hit this year over a number of different things. So we'd be looking probably at this point to utilize the municipal capital account to offset those expenses of $24,153.13. And then mistakenly, when we authorized the purchase of the guard shack at Foggland, it was my era that, I know that we had $6,000 in the grant that we did for open space. The $6,000 wasn't actually grant money, it was the match to the grant. So I actually need the other $6,000. And, you know, to help justify and augment that, you know, we did bring in $22,000 of sales of salvage vehicles that went into that account. And Rick also had $14,000 for the septic system at Cranial Road that was surplused and put back in that municipal maintenance account. So there is sufficient funds to pay for these two expenditures that need to be cleaned up with the Treasurer's office.
Did we also put in the money from the rebate for the police vehicles?
Yes, we're doing that now, as those come in now, yeah.
So how much are we taking from the capital?
So it'd be $24,153.13 and $6,000. So altogether, it's.
Thirty thousand, thirty one fifty three thirteen.
Madam President.
What?
I'd like to make a motion to grant the administrator and the treasurer the ability to utilize the funds as outlined in this request.
To the amount of thirty thousand one.
To the amount as stipulated by the administrator.
One second.
So I have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Okay. Dave Stewart, I saw him. Stop the quarry. I really liked that, Dave. Update on Highland Ridge Farm.
Hello.
Hello. You can take a seat if you like, both of you.
All right. David Stewart, 593 Highland Road, Tiverton. Okay. David Stewart, 593 Highland Road, Tiverton.
And Norm White at 583 Highland Road, Tiverton.
Hey.
We're here to basically try to stop the quarry operation that's going on at the end of Highland Road, Highland Ridge Farm, whose principal office is at Willow Street in Little Compton, has been running the business there. It involves acquiring of sand and rocks and minerals, which is currently illegal under, at least we understand it's illegal under our current ordinances, plus the operation's in a R4 residential area. The noise, the air pollution, the water pollution it's generating is really concerning to us. And that in addition, we'd also like to know the status of a lawsuit that supposedly the town has or he's absolutely suing the town. I'm not sure of how that all stands, but we're here to try to eliminate this quarry. It's incredible noise. It goes on most weekdays and sometimes early in the morning, the afternoon. And we have a noise up here we can let you hear.
This appears to be the exact equipment, I believe.
People usually invite me to their houses to hear this.
Have you heard it?
No, the other quarry I'm going to, yeah. Not that one. That's okay.
I think a link to one of, a couple of the sites we're sent to.
So this, what I understand, there's two lawsuits, and I'm gonna.
Correct.
Oh, you're gonna pass it off?
Bit of a voice.
Well. You were not, you weren't at the agenda meeting, and Mike said, let me explain it to them. But Todd.
There are two lawsuits pending.
Right.
One in state court, one in federal court. The federal court, one is the one that's being pressed right now. It's concerning curb cuts, one could say. There are discussions because the applicant is considering submitting a plan to, again, have his, I'm gonna call it a senior housing project that he had previously proposed. So he is exploring that at the court's direction, and once, and the court is pressing him to make a decision. So once he comes to a decision about that, we will know how to further act on the federal court action as well as state court action. State court action involves whether this is a grandfathered quarry.
I don't think, talking to some attorneys, other attorneys, I don't think this qualifies for grandfathering. It's long expired, any grandfathered.
Okay.
He doesn't have a quarry license either.
He doesn't have a license. It's not allowed in Tiverton's ordinance. And also, we have a copy of his license with the state, and it's for farmland.
I understand that.
I mean, it's totally wrong what he's doing.
But this is all part of what we're doing.
And the noise is unbearable. And I was, I lived out the very end of Highland Road. Norm was next door. I've talked to people, Daniel Church, the hearing. I got a call the other day from Louise Durff, who lives right in the middle of Highland Road. She said it's unbearable. I mean, it's people on April Lane.
Is he actually quarrying though?
We have pictures. We have pictures. We went up there on Sunday. And the equipment he's.
You don't want to say that.
I have, we have pictures as well.
All right.
No, actually, they're like an excavator with a jackhammer.
Remember we were saying we should go, yeah.
I can't imagine what that would sound like if you're Daniel Church above.
Yeah.
Cliff, and he's in there with a jackhammer on the end of an excavator, going at it like that. Stuff falls down. I guess they pick up, put it in the thing that crushes the rocks, makes a ton of gravel, and then they take it out. They have a rock crusher up there.
I mean, it's.
And that's what's going.
He's quarrying.
He had processing as well.
Then they dump it. Once the thing grinds it all up, then they dump it into dump trucks, these large dump trucks, which you can imagine how that sounds. Then they come down in either large dump trucks or 18-wheelers, and they're coming down that road, I mean, requesting a curb cut to build. I mean, I was at the hearing when he had town principally, and the Fire Chief and everybody else talked about that development he wanted to do up there. There's no way he's gonna be able to commit. And it just doesn't lend itself. And what he's doing, he's got this tremendous rock ledge, they're just chopping away at it. And it's, it's an ongoing quarry. It's a business.
Which must sound amazing.
And he's, he's tried to tell people that he's, that he's doing it to build a foundation. Well, he must be building a prudential center there because there's just no way. It's absolutely, you know, and it's really been going strong since early fall. And.
So what I can suggest is that you provide those audios to the building official, who I am also working with on this issue, and leave your names with him, and he or I will be in touch with you regarding affidavits, if that's what we decide is the appropriate action to take.
I've had numerous people say that they're more than happy to sign petitions. I mean, this is, we've done a study, there's $63 million worth of real estate, assessed real estate within how big a range?
A thousand feet, and it's 25 million within 300 feet, and he's destroying their value. I mean, who's gonna buy a house next to a quarry?
Okay, so here's part of the problem as well, though. If he does present a plan to the planning board for the senior housing, as I'm calling it, and if that is approved, he is allowed to go forward with that, and it's going to essentially be digging out whatever he needs to. You understand that?
That could take years and years to do.
It could.
And it's, he's. Depends how the plan is approved.
Correct.
So you're allowed to dig out, or you're not allowed to dig out?
Well, it's, it's not quite that easy.
I mean, this.
If he's allowed to develop it, he's allowed to develop it. Whether it's a grandfathered quarry or not, and.
All right. It's an only life issue for you too, so.
Hi, Jen.
I'm on the zoning board, Jennifer Hilton. And.
Be careful, Jen.
Yes, Jennifer Hilton.
No, 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 just saying.
Because you're on the zoning.
Because you're on the zoning board, it may have to make a decision on this.
You may not want to.
I'd be very careful.
Probably shouldn't publicly make a statement.
Because that can be used against you not voting.
She's an abuser.
What?
She's an abuser.
I'm not, I'm an abuser. I'm not speaking in zoning board capacity.
Yeah, she has to recuse.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure.
She's an abuser, so she wouldn't be able to.
Yeah, right.
She has to recuse anyone.
Yeah.
Well.
We just want to be safe.
Yeah, you do.
We just want to be.
Would.
Because you abut the property, you're gonna have to recuse on the zoning board.
Okay.
You won't be able to vote.
Sure. I forgot what I was gonna say.
We need to get rid of it.
No. Oh, this, this came in front of us on the zoning board a while back when he originally went to the planning board for this decision. And there was a huge argument.
That was when he was doing a subdivision.
When he was doing the subdivision.
Concerning a right of way.
Yeah, so there was a franchise issue, no?
Off of Budway?
Off of Budway.
Correct.
To gain access to the development in order to do what he wants to do.
In that application, my recollection is the planning board denied it because it did not have access to the property.
And there was.
That was appealed to the planning board or zoning board of review, which affirmed the planning guilt of that decision.
Got it. So if he were to come in front of the planning board again with that same plan, he.
So there are other, there are other entrances on Old Bogomash Road.
Oh.
Further down on.
Weren't those appealed by the neighbors, though? Wasn't that in Supreme Court or Superior Court?
No.
No. Okay. Anyway. Carry on. Thank you. I'm opposed.
But Todd, it is true that he would be limited in how much removal he could do.
He would be limited to the area where the project is.
Right, but.
Is approved for.
There is no plan right now.
Correct.
But it may be that huge area.
Correct. If the project's approved for five acres, then that's what he could develop.
Isn't it up on a hill full of ledge?
It's very high up. I mean, it's, I mean, yeah.
How are you gonna build?
Mountain goat to get up. It's not.
He is right. He is right. It's way up there.
I mean, I wish you could have a look at it.
I did. A little bit. I was told not, I was told not to go too much up there.
Forty-five foot ledge.
Forty-five. It's well over, well over 100.
And it's like he must.
I'm not a good guessing there.
It's, it's, it's very, very high. And, I mean, he's thinking.
We're aware of the difficulties that he has, but if the engineering shows that it can be done, then the planning board will have to act on that.
So is there any way to stop him in the meantime from doing what he's doing? I think that that's, the gist of the question is, is there any way that he can be stayed from quarrying until?
What, how can you do this?
I mean, he's just gonna string us along forever.
It's one of the other suits that were involved, but there's the actual quarrying license to be.
Well, I think that would be the building inspector zoning would have to stop that. A quarry's not allowed.
Correct, unless it's grandfathered.
And that was not, because he, that was never a quarry originally.
That's the subject of the new court county litigation.
But couldn't we get a temporary injunction on him?
So that's why I've asked these gentlemen to go to the building official, give them their evidence.
Got it.
So I can see what there is.
Okay.
And see how to act on that evidence.
Perfect, okay. They, they need to know why they're going there, so that's, that's why. Okay.
And others too.
Are you right?
Other, not just those two?
Any of the others.
Yeah. So Jen, you can do it too.
There was something else I put out today that's showing that there's approximately 50% of the original property is now residential, which is one of the conditions for saying it should not be a quarry or anything like it, if it's been substantially developed as residential property since it was, when it was operating. Assume it was.
So there are a lot of things that are going through my head as to this litigation that I don't think is appropriate to get into at this point, to involve what Madam President discussed about getting a quarry license and what is required with that quarry license and what you have to show when you get a quarry license.
How can you get a license if it's in ordinance against it?
If it's grandfathered, right. If it is.
How long does a grandfathered right last?
With quarries, they have a special privilege, a special status.
Yeah.
They can go dormant for a period of time and still.
Come back.
Be resurrected and used.
Any idea how long dormant?
It's unlimited as far as I know.
Yeah, and we've been through this before with another property.
Isn't there part of this that says they can't expand more than 25% of what they were?
That's what your local ordinance. That's what your local ordinance
That's just a local ordinance.
And again, we have.
It's complicated, and it's gonna cost.
Which could change that metric.
But to give them some relief right now, because this could go on and on and on. You know how the courts are.
But that's what we're working on.
That's why.
But what about, what about like this noise? If they're over, if they're over. We have a noise ordinance.
Or would that not apply?
A noise ordinance that applies to quarries?
To any.
To anybody.
I'd have to look at it.
Yeah.
And that's why I've asked them to go to the zoning official.
Okay.
Okay, so what Todd is saying, that this is complicated, it's part of a lawsuit, so we have to be very careful what we say and let out in public. But he does need residents to go to the, the building official, give your evidence, and Todd will take all of this and go forward or do what he needs to do. But you do understand that. We have to be very careful.
No, I understand, but we just gotta stop this thing, because it just, it's, it's very, and one reason we're in Tiverton is because of the peace and quiet.
Oh, yeah.
This thing goes 10 o'clock, not 8:00 in the morning.
Last year, the lane closed, and they removed your office, and he gets the peace and quiet.
No.
All right, so first thing you need to do is go to the building official.
We'll be there tomorrow.
And you need to know that we are working on things. There are lawsuits out there.
Videos, pictures, anything.
Yeah, there's a lot going on right now.
Would a petition by X number of people have any weight?
A petition's not gonna do anything. That's not fact.
Yeah.
It's just a list of people.
Yeah.
It's a list of very upset people.
It's not fact as to the noise, as to the action.
Well, all of us could go down there and meet and hear this thing, and that would certainly be fact.
That's why he needs all that information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Although, along those lines, in our group, we have a bunch of neighbors, they have different talents, and you have some lawyers, you get some doctors, in case we drive in about, I don't think they're psychiatrists.
We do need one of those on board.
We can compile information, create tables, the stuff we received today, I think is sort of the kind of thing we could do. And to close on that issue, I think Roy Orbison said, anything you want, you got it.
Okay. All right.
All right, we'll meet with the building official.
And if we get any news of any further information on this, I'll put it on the agenda so that you do get full disclosure. Okay? Okay.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Quarry's a big problem forever. DPW director, oh, he's getting up and ready. Approval of budget transfers from FY '23, $50,000 in from account 5510-5101. DPW workers to account 5540-6648. Equipment repairs, $200 from account 5130-5180. Maintenance and labor seasonal to account 5130-6653 to equipment replacements. Are there any questions from the council for Rec?
Madam President?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion to approve the budget transfers as requested by the DPW director.
And thank you for that, John. Just one thing, there's a typo. It's in the request, it's 5540-5101. Here in the.
Which one?
In the agenda, it's number one, $50,000. It says 5510, it's 5540.
Okay. Dash 5101.
Yes. But other than that, it's terrific, and I appreciate the motion.
Do I have a, did I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion been made in second. Any further discussions or questions? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rec. Discussion on potential amendments to the Tiverton Code of Ordinances, Appendix A, zoning, short-term rentals. Counselor Burke?
Thank you, Madam President, and I apologize. I wasn't thinking when I sent this table that I probably needed to append the draft ordinance, but we're not touching the ordinance as it is. This is just in terms of discussion points for the council members, just to walk through. You have, and I would not suggest at all that this is exhaustive. It's as much as Mike and I could remember and think of and find in our notes. But you have the key points on the left. You have the current draft language in the ordinance, a summary of the draft language, and then some discussion questions that we came up with. So if I may just walk through them each. So some ordinances that we've seen, and I can send it to the clerk to send to folks. Warwick has an ordinance, and they have a preamble and a purpose that really talks about meeting the needs of their community and the residents of their community while also recognizing the tourism potential. So we could look at doing something in that regard. Then the second point, STRs are not, are not permitted use in any zone in Tiverton at this time. That's clear from our ordinances, because there is the section, and I'm not gonna cite the section of the code, it's in here, but it says prohibited uses reads, urges, uses not listed or not generally provided for in the zoning district use table shall not be permitted anywhere in the town of Tiverton. So that goes with the short-term rentals. Right now, we have not stopped them from being used. The current draft language would provide an avenue for short-term rentals to be permitted, provided compliance with the ordinance. So in terms of some ideas to discuss, some have suggested to enforce now use enforcement tools to do so, so meaning, since we don't allow, do we wanna just say, you can't do it anymore? That's one, one thought. Some have suggested they are, that they are permitted under new state law requiring cities, towns to allow advertising of short-term rentals and hosting platforms, and I've discussed this ad infinitum with Mike. And if you look below the fourth bullet in that section, cities and towns from regulating STRs, it does say that if, if there are STRs that you're allowing, that they, you can't keep them from advertising on short-term rental sites. And then the question is, do we proceed with this draft on our end, while we're also looking at having, have asked our members of the assembly to give us more clear authority under licensing? So right now, we have zoning to use only. It's kind of a hammer approach. Licensing would be a little bit more nuanced, the ability to license outright like we license other businesses.
And that's at the state now.
It has.
We sent it there.
Yeah, I don't.
It hasn't been.
I don't think it's been introduced yet.
No, it hasn't.
But they, their dead, yeah, their deadline is generally this week for introduced bills, but there's, I know the Senate has a lot of bills that will probably be printed out, you know, be made available next week when they're on break, and I assume the House will too.
Mike myself is watching it carefully, because him and I have planning on going up, and if he wanted to go up, and, okay.
So I don't know if you wanna stop and have this go, or you want me to walk through the whole thing?
Walk through. I just wanted to make sure the audience knows it's there.
Yep, yep. So then, no, I'd keep, the next key point, permitted zones. Right now in the draft, it says all zones by special use permit, except excluded in highway, commercial, industrial, and open space. Some points to ponder, do we simply not allow it at all in residential zones is one? Do we restrict in specific zones such as waterfront? And then how does permitting in certain zoned areas support the intent of the comprehensive plan regarding the character of the town, quality of life of residents, the promotion of tourism, and affordability of housing? It's not to suggest that other parts of the comp plan are not affected by a decision on STRs, and therefore are, of course, open for discussion. Those are just some of the key points. So turning to the next page. Next key point, use of special use permit if granted stays with the property even after sold. Current draft language in suggested permitted zones can only be done by special use permit provided annual fee is paid and up to date, and that the property continues to meet the STR requirements in Section 5 of that draft, and they're outlined in terms of meeting health and safety requirements, and parking, and things like that. The question is, do we simply restrict from certain zones again and allow by right in others? Or do, or can we create a new category of special use permit that does not follow the property of sold? And I think you would fall on that part. Our attorney's saying no. So we can investigate that, but that's likely not a possibility if we do use special use permits. Key point next, definitions, only defines the term dwelling unit, but contains certain exclusions such as tents, campers, RVs, lean-tos, and also excludes properties that are served by cesspools. Some municipalities have specific restrictions that do not permit designated affordable housing units to be used as STRs. Some indicate that accessory units and accessory family dwelling units cannot be used for STRs. The question, do we exclude properties served only by private wells, because that has come up in testimony from residents about their concern about well water? Next key point, owner occupancy. Must occupy, right now, as it reads in the draft, a person must occupy the same dwelling unit that it's in or reside on the same lot for 180 days annually, or live in Tiverton within a three-mile radius of the property, and must own the STR property for five years before it can be used as an STR. So the questions, do we require owner occupancy? Do we maintain the Tiverton residency requirement? And I know Mike is, you know, wants to look at that, whether or not we actually can. Do we keep the need to own for five years? Do or can we limit the number of STRs owned and operated by one person, one entity? Can we not permit corporations to own or operate? Next point, occupancy by renters. Currently, it's defined as 150% of the sleeping capacity is defined by the building official. The question is, do we specify the number of occupants by the number of bedrooms? And some communities do this. So for example, some specify two per bedroom, but the number of bedrooms further defined by the wastewater management system and what it can handle. What other ways might we define occupancy? And do we cap the number of bedrooms allowed in any one STR? State registration requirements, they must be registered with the Department of Business Regulation for the law that's cited there. There are quite a few registered now. I haven't looked lately as to how many in Tiverton. Parking, and this is a biggie. Currently, the draft language limits it to parking requirements of our Code of Ordinances, Article 10, Section 1, which says that one and a half car spaces for each dwelling unit. In residential zones, parking must be met with off-street parking. Questions, do we specify that all parking must be off-street? If yes, on allowing only off-street, do we further specify that it must be on the same parcel? Or, you know, obviously, another question is, do we keep it as is? Then the next key point is registration fee. The current draft language sets it as $1,000 annually per dwelling unit. So some questions to think about there. Do we reduce the fee to a lower flat fee that is the same regardless of the occupancy size of the STR? If so, to what dollar amount? Or do we set a tiered system based on the number of bedrooms? And I just gave one example here, say, for example, one bedroom is $250 annually, two bedrooms, $500, three, $750, four, $1,000 annually, and any additional bedrooms add $100 per bedroom. But that's just as an example.
And is it just?
Local representative, we currently have must live within 25 miles of the STR and must respond to the police fire within 12 hours of contact or sooner upon request by the police. So some thoughts, should this be time-based versus distance-based? We heard some responses on that. Should we specify a response time within one hour or less for any contact from renters or police fire? So if I happen to be renting your STR, then I have a problem, then you need to be able to get to take care of that problem within an hour. Or if the police or fire contact the owner of the STR, they would have to do the same. Trash, recycling collection. We basically say that the owner must provide instructions for renters based on Tiverton's regulations. Some questions that have come up, do we require the owner to obtain a private trash service? If we do require a trash, private trash service, are we concerned about large trash bins populating around town? Kind of like the donation bins that we've talked about, but trash. Noise and other quality of life ordinances. Currently, the language states that you must comply with all Tiverton Code of Ordinances, so we relied on what's already in the ordinances for that. The questions are, do we wanna be more specific with what is allowed, not allowed? Do we wanna specifically state that no events in some places do that, including, but not limited to catered parties, weddings, all aspects of the wedding, funerals or other special events not be permitted? Fire safety inspections, we authorize the appropriate local official to conduct, but it doesn't require. So then, many municipalities will require annual inspections, and then we wanna specify which ones. And then the last one that's on here, certainly, again, this is not necessarily exhaustive. Enforcement, the current language is $100 per day for noncompliance with conditions of the special use permit, and $500 per day if found to advertise the STR without having obtained a special use permit, potential, and also potential conditions to be imposed for citations, police reports, and revocation of permit for repeat offenders. And then the question is, are these adequate? Are these too burdensome? Do we consider using the services of a company that assists municipalities in tracking for enforcement purposes? And, you know, I'll give one example, I won't name the company, but I was, in doing my research and watching some videos, there are companies out there, not just one, that will perform a lot of your enforcement services and your check services, and they'll do the registration for you and all that, for a fee. So we could, you know, I know some folks have said, you know, well, we don't wanna necessarily add more staff, but we could possibly do it by going through that type of a service. And I keep on getting emails from this company since I went to them once or a few times.
Don't you hate that? So, Mike, thank you. I think this organized it to a point you all agree. You know, I was looking at this yesterday and thinking, I think this requires a workshop, workshop with us on a special night, where we just give a couple hours to this. I'm saying a couple hours, I'm being optimistic. But this is a good way to start for every, for all of us to think about these points and come to this workshop with how we feel. And I really do wanna make, thank Mike, because I think he did organize this for us.
Mike and Mike.
Mike and Mike.
And Todd.
And Todd. Being a little fresh tonight, I know.
Very smart, Todd.
So I'm thinking in March. And, right, because we're, we're gonna do March.
So we have, do we have an extra meeting in March?
No.
When we have the workshop reserved?
We had one in January. We had one in January.
So it's, I mean, is everyone, this is a month away, but March 20th being on a Monday because John has requested we do. John, I've taken every Tuesday off so I can do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You what?
I won't be here March.
He won't be here.
You won't be here? March 20th. See, that's a lot of problems. I'm going away when Mike's going. Dennis is gone.
What about the 3rd of April? We also have to think about budget coming up too. No, he won't be here April 3rd.
You're about 62 years old, huh? Takes time off.
No, as it happens, my son is being promoted and he's taking the command and goes into the ceremony.
Congrats. Oh, it's just your birthday?
Oh, it is?
No motion?
Oh, don't you want to spend your birthday with us, your new friends?
Nice talk.
That was a hard no.
John, are you available any other days of the week in advance? Would you know?
Depends on how far in advance we're talking. So like if we talk about like beginning of April, that April 3rd, I wouldn't be around because there's a conference I have to attend. Right now, I don't have anything scheduled in March.
So we could do another day?
We could, we could potentially do another day, yes. Did we have a specific day in mind?
Um.
Because our meetings are, our meetings are 13th and 27th of March, right? Correct?
Right.
Right, so how about the day after Dennis's birthday, the 21st?
That's okay.
That's okay. I didn't know you were going away for your birthday.
Well, I mean, I'm going away, but I won't be back.
You won't be back on the 21st? Okay, so you will be around the 21st?
Yes.
That's good. Is that good with everybody? So March 21st, the meeting will only be for this, starting at 7:00? And don't call it a special meeting instead of a workshop. You know the reasons for that. In case we wanted to vote on certain things that we were sure of. I doubt we are, but let's just call it a special meeting.
Where do we start?
And especially if I have an emergency I have to put in there, then I can, we can do it.
But, um...
Where do we start?
7:00.
What location?
Is there anything here on the 21st generally?
Well, why don't we, why don't we have Joan look for a location? Because we could do the library, we could do the senior center.
I feel like attendance might be higher for this one.
Yeah, and let everyone know, this, you see what we're doing, right? We're getting together the ideas of everyone and we're going to try to put this together.
But are the public, is the public invited?
Yes, it's a public meeting.
It's always a public meeting. It's not, it's not a public dialogue.
It's not a public dialogue.
Right? Yes. We've already, to be respectful, we've heard hours and hours and we've gone through reams and reams of written information. Much of it that we're getting now is the same information that has been provided as before. So we now need an opportunity to have a frank discussion amongst ourselves to be able to lay out what we think we can agree to, put that into a new draft, not you, Mike, and then come back and make a decision.
Now, at that meeting, while we, we'll probably let residents talk when it's all together.
Right.
When it's all together.
That's what I would think.
Okay, because right now, we're talking theory. So let us put it all together again and then we'll, we'll let the public talk again.
Respectfully, last time when we had the discussion about a subcommittee and getting everybody together to talk this out, you had said that these meetings effectively creates that situation. Without our ability to go beyond what Councilor Burke really talked about, which is to question some of the presentations or comments that the subcommittee or come up with other ideas, it's really not a subcommittee.
Once we put it all together, then tell us what you don't like about it again. You know what I'm saying? But let us put it in a format because some of these ideas you gave us.
Not, none of, they're not here.
Well, in theory, they are.
So these appear to be the ones that are mostly opposed.
No, they're not. No, they're not. Because Mike just put some questions, but if you really look at the subject part, it was all discussed by, by you guys also. So we're gonna, that's the best way to do this because if not, it'll go on and on. So we're gonna put, we need time to talk it over with ourselves.
And at the end of the day, those who make the decisions are the seven councilors who sit up here. So it's not going to please everybody, but we were elected to do these types of things. And if folks don't like what we do, you know, in a year and a half, there's another election. If we decide to run, then you make those choices. I mean, I really frankly look at my job here like that. You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do my best to listen and incorporate based on what I think things should look like, whether it's this, whether it's the donation bins and the other, my colleagues will do the same, we'll come to some level of agreement or not and take a vote and whatever happens from there is what goes forward.
It's usually all about a compromise and getting everyone's opinion together. And usually we come up with a fair. But let me tell you, I've been doing this 10 years. Nobody likes, everybody doesn't like everything. And so we try to, we try to make as many people comfortable with us, with what we do. And like I said, yes, I did say that, but once we, we gotta get it back together in an ordinance with, and change the present one, get some of these ideas, and I'm sure we're all thinking of like, this, this is just a format to begin. And I have notes I want everyone in this audience, which I'll bring with me to this, this meeting. And I'm sure everybody else does too, and everybody else has ideas. So do I have a motion? I don't, yeah, I have need a motion to set the meeting.
Motion to hold a special town council meeting for the purposes of discussing the STR and discussing and possible votes on moving forward with the STR ordinance for March 21st at 7:00 PM.
We don't know where yet, Joan will...
Second.
Figure it out for us and, okay, motion remained in second. Any further discussion?
One quick, just one quick point. You know, I'm happy that we're going to be doing the workshop and it's going to be dedicated mostly to this because as of yet, I haven't had an opportunity to weigh in on any of this.
Absolutely.
And...
Because you missed the last meeting.
I did, well, we had a scheduling conflict and I was already booked to travel for work. So I will tell you, from my perspective, I think this needs a lot of work.
Oh, it does, and we all agree to that.
Like a lot of work.
And John, we, that's why we keep doing this. All right. Motion remained in second. All those in favor? I don't think I did that. Okay. Discussion possible vote, we got in the correction of police capital allocation from 285, 256 to 284, 006.
Just a curve, just a curve.
Yeah, at the January meeting, those numbers were wrong.
It's also fire in our police.
What?
It's fire.
Oh, not police. Fire capital allocation for this casino money. It's, it's the casino out. It's the casino money, right?
Should've said public safety.
But it was the casino money, right?
It was, but it was, it was basically when we did public safety.
Right. And John, the nurse was right.
The nurse was right?
He'll know what I'm talking about. The nurse's numbers were, were right, John. He's not paying attention, Mike.
But it's fire, it's...
It's fire casino capital allocation. It's fire. It's fire.
Is police here too?
No, because just the items on the right.
Just okay.
15 grand.
Yeah, that all has to be changed.
And can we do that?
This wasn't advertised correctly.
That's phenomenal.
So we've got to wait.
Right.
Does this need to be done tonight?
No.
Be done until...
Yeah. Okay, we're gonna have to table this.
We won't, we won't spend the 1,500 bucks.
Okay, so we're gonna table this to the next meeting. Do I have a motion?
Well, repost it as the appropriate...
Repost it as the, yeah, we're not even tabling this. I don't even need a vote. We're reposting it.
Madam President, just a quick question on this. If I understand the way that this capital is allocated, if we don't spend it, it goes back? So for $1,000, this feels like an exercise in futility if we know what the numbers were?
It's just correcting a vote is all it was doing.
Okay.
The vote. Okay. All right. Moving on, town clerk.
One, one more item. We should, if we're going to amend...
What comes back in two weeks?
Right, right. No, yeah.
It has to be advertised properly.
Yep. No, I know that, I know that.
So, but with, with this read advertisement, we're gonna have to redo the vote total as well, correct? Okay. I just want to make sure.
All right, town clerk should have a discussing special election for charter review commission.
It is time.
Well, we have to do it, yeah.
I do apologize, I was out at the end of last week, so I did not get the backup out to you, so I'll...
Oh, that's, that's fine. Because it's gonna be a while. It's, it's a long process. I sat with Joan and she looked at the last time we did it and counted how many days we started it. So we went from a specific day.
Thank you.
Joan was the one that discovered this.
So you bet, you won.
So, of course...
We've already missed some days. Hooray.
So the last time there was a charter review commission, it was in, there was a special election in 2017. And what I've passed out is the schedule for the, it was actually July 18th of 2017. And believe it or not, 2023 has the same, the same calendar.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
That's why it's every five years.
It's six years.
It's every six years.
Six years, whatever it is. We skip...
So I just want to bring up a couple of points. The charter review commission falls under Title 17 of the state, so it's under state law. So we have to follow the rules associated with any general election, any statewide election in, in this, for this special election. So any of the changes that occurred between 2017 and 2022 would need to be incorporated in this, which is a lot of the changes with mail ballots and early voting. So those would have to be incorporated into the schedule and the requirements for that. In order to move forward with a special election, there will need to be a resolution approved by the council to hold a special election. So we can provide that at the next council meeting. So you have the, I think the, probably the start of the list, start of the schedule starts with declaration of candidacy.
What's this all candidate disaffiliation?
That's if it was a partisan election.
But it's not.
But it's not. So charter review commission is nonpartisan.
Okay.
So basically the...
So that whole top is...
Yeah. So the, but we still have to follow those rules and follow a procedure for the voter registration.
Well, we're gonna start this on May 4th.
So in 2017, the declaration of candidacy would be the first thing that happens, as it does in a, in a normal election for town council, school committee, whatever. Nomination papers then have to be provided to the candidates and then they have to return them. And the reason for that, that whole process, and it's subject to Title 17, is because there has to be campaign finance packages provided to them. They have to file campaign finance and all that stuff. So then it goes through the process and then you have the, the election. So this schedule was July 18th. The last day of the school year is June 16th. So I would not recommend having any election right to the end of school. Because we would have to use, we may have to use all, we may have to open all seven polling locations. I have an email out to the state board of elections to see if we can reduce that number, similar to how we did with the special election for the bonds that was in March of '21, where we only had two locations opened rather than all seven. So we're gonna try in that, with that approach. And because we have done this election before in 2017, I think we may have had, we had less than 2,000 voters.
Now, the election will be July 18th?
If you choose to have it on July 18th. There are other possibilities. You could, this July 11th, which would bring up, that's why I provided the calendar. If you chose to have it on July 11th, it would move the nomination papers to the declaration of candidacy up to April 27th and 28th. You could have it in June, June 27th. The declaration papers would need to be filed by April 13th and 14th. You could have it June 20th. I think that would be the earliest and the declaration papers would be April 6th and 7th. The thing is, there has to be some advertising to get candidates to declare.
That's why I think July, July 18th is the better date because if, if we do it that way, then we have like all of April and all of March to try to get some people to...
And the work's already been done, like...
Yeah.
Why, why give the clerk more work?
And I think if we do it, I hate elections in the summer, but we have to do it because people are on vacation and all of that.
We can't really go beyond July 18th because the date requirements at the back end after they're done, correct?
Correct. They have basically, once they're elected and certified, they have basically one year to report back to the council.
And then we have to put it on the November election.
Correct. And I'm expecting the, again, the ballot questions to be around the beginning of August as this past year, it was August 9th. So it would have to be before the beginning of August, it would come before the council for public hearing.
But like, like I said at the meeting the other day, the agenda meeting, last time it came back to us like maybe six, seven months. Like they came in like June back to us or May back to us, because they came with 78 questions, so it took us a long time to sift through.
Silly, but maybe pertinent question. What do we do if we get no applicants?
Then, then we have to think, I don't know what we do, but let's, let's worry about that when that happens.
Write-ins.
Well, you, you do have the possibility of write-ins, which I just, we, in our, the clerk's office just love write-ins with Mickey Mouse and...
Donald Duck.
I'll tell you who...
So how many members do we need?
Nine.
Nine.
Okay. All right, so we, we've got to spread the word also. Anybody that we know that might be interested in this. And we know a lot of people.
And depending if the returns aren't great, I'll let you all know who we should all be writing in as punishment.
Well, write-in, sure, but they have to...
I mean, I'll tell you, last time there were people who wanted to come and do it. So let's just say, and I, in my mind, I'm thinking of, yeah, not them.
No, I was on the ballot.
Oh, you were?
There were...
Madam President, a quick question as it relates to this election. Do we have the dollars in the election account to support this? Okay.
And not only that, the biggest cost would be if we have to open all seven polls.
Okay.
Then you have to think too, John, that this year there might not be enough TR because of the new way that this is constructed.
Well, actually, it wouldn't be until next year if we had one. Think about it.
It'll be in July.
Because of the date, we don't finish the budget until the end of June.
Are you right? Okay, so everyone, so...
So I will have a resolution reflecting the July 18th, 2023 date.
Do I need a vote?
We can vote on the resolution next meeting.
Yeah, but I, oh, I do have to do that, as I thought.
Motion to direct the town clerk to bring back at our February 27th meeting resolution outlining the elections for dates and other matters pertaining to the election process for charter review commission.
Second question, it's not listed on here, it's for a vote.
Possible.
Do we need to amend the agenda?
No, we'll just have them, just write up the resolution. And she can come back to us with all the information. Okay. Announcements, Administrator Carter.
So the Tiverton Lions Club holds their annual recognition night for a number of individuals in both Tiverton and Little Compton. The list of nominees for the Tiverton, the Heart of Lions is going to Joseph Perry. Our school department has a number of them. Our police department and fire department also have nominees. So I want you to take note of it.
I've, I've been to these.
I think it's a very worthwhile event and it's truly a great recognition to some very dedicated individuals in town.
I've been to a couple, at least a couple, I think. Even Joan's been to some with me.
So, and the second announcement is, I'm just letting you know that some of our department heads have reached out to do some grant applications, they're non-matching grants, but in, in abundance of being transparent, we are applying to the trust and to the legislative grants and some FEMA and Rhode Island Emergency Management grants as well.
And I'm sure the police chief is right there with you.
Actually, actually, I don't think he's, no, he actually is on one of these.
And actually, the town clerk's office is applying for a legislative grant.
I'm sure the fire department is too.
Yep, they are.
All right, thank you. I like a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Motion remained in second. All those in favor? Thank you.